The matter of Morgan Dennehy versus East Windsor Regional Board of Education. Can we please have appearances of counsel?
May please the court, I'm Timothy Beck, P E C K, of the D Francisco Bateman Firm, for the East Windsor defendants, including Coach Phil Meyer.
Good afternoon, Brian Hayesey from Law Room of Schaffman, Lake and Blumstein and Blader, on behalf of Morgan Dennehy, the respondent plaintiff.
Good afternoon, may it please the court, Kayla Elizabeth Rowe, on behalf of Amicus, the New Jersey Civil Justice Institute.
Good afternoon, may it please the court, Justin Lee Klein, K L V I N, on behalf of Amicus, New Jersey Association for Justice.
Good afternoon, everyone, welcome. With four gifted attorneys, I'll ask you to incorporate any arguments that you agree with that have preceded you, just in the interest of time, and we're happy to hear from you. Mr. Beck, please go ahead.
First, I want to thank the court, among other things, having an in-person hearing. I'll tell you, this has been very refreshing to know that we're going to be arguing in person again, instead of some of the more remote hearings that we've had. This is a refreshing way, and I think the way it, we all envisioned these arguments to go. I would like to reserve two minutes of rebuttal time, please. Now, first, on behalf of the Coach Phil Meyer and the East Windsor defendants, we appreciate the court certifying this for, this petition for certification and granting certification on this case. This is an appeal from a published decision, in which there was no dissent, but which divested an entire class of sporting participants of a standard of care recognized since 1994. I believe the court appreciates the need to address an interpretation and application of the Cron, Schick recklessness standard, that would have great implications for recreational scholastic sports, given the way they are played, and the role of the coach in the instruction and involvement of the sporting activities, and where the court's, the appellate division's holding on this would essentially appear to establish a bright line disqualification of amateur scholastic coaches and instructors from the reckless standard that heretofore applied to conduct in recreational sporting contexts. So this appeal is not, as the appellate division seems to couch it, an appeal for applying a new standard to the conduct of instructors or coaches, but it's really an appeal to preserve the practical and intended application of the Schick recklessness standard to those involved in recreational sporting activities. For the reasons outlined in our petition for certification, we're asking this court to reverse the appellate division judgment and reinstate the order for summary judgment that dismissed all of the claims against all of the party defendants, including Coach Phil Meyer. The facts of the case are already known to the court. I just want to mention a few bullet points, so to speak, that I think make this case one where the recklessness standard surely has to apply if we're going to have scholastic, athletic, amateur sporting activities proceed in a manner envisioned by student athletes, parents, and school systems in this state. In 2013, the East Windsor School District built this, constructed the athletic facility that is in question here. It improved greatly the facilities that were available to these student athletes, and part of the intent of this construction was to provide a quality athletic facility in which simultaneous sporting events or practices could be held on quality surfaces. So you no longer had the, it's really Hightstown High School, but it's East Windsor, Hightstown High School Athletic Field, where really the only quality facility or surface was the football field. What the new facility established and was able to accomplish was a quality athletic field where there could be multiple practices, where teams like the field hockey team are not playing out in pastures, are not playing out in grounds where you don't get true hops, you don't get the feel that one has for game time a play. So to that end, they built this facility that included the 20-foot ball stopper. One of the things that I think this court has to remember is what is being appealed from. The original complaint included claims against all of the defendants, including the Board of Education for failure to provide a safe facility in which these activities could take place. The motion for summary judgment was an omnibus motion, and the order for summary judgment was an omnibus decision that included immunities based upon a failure to establish a dangerous condition of public property, planned and designed immunity because the ball stopper, the netting system that plays into this case, was approved and was designed, and the immunity was not appealed from. So we have a facility where there is not a declaration of any type of dangerous condition. This is a safe facility as a matter of law. So Coach Phil Meyer organizing a practice in the D-zone can't be seen as introducing a hazard, a dangerous element into this case. What we have is, on September 9th, 2015, the varsity field, women's field, girls' field hockey team at the high school level, is scheduled for an on-field reserved practice. That means on the turf field at 3:45. At 3 o'clock, they have the less formal corners drill in the D-zone, and...
Mr. Beck, we...
Certainly.
I forgive the interruption. We're familiar with the underlying facts, and you rightly pointed to the critical question at the outset. What's the appropriate standard of care? Can you focus on the appellate division's decision? Tell us what was wrong, and what the standard should be.
Certainly. Well, the standard should be the recklessness standard that's envisioned in Cron and Schick. What the appellate division got wrong was creating a bright-line standard that disqualifies by title, coach, disqualifies an entire class of participants to the Cron and Schick standard. Cron and Schick, and particularly Schick, stated that the recklessness or intentional conduct standard of care applies generally to conduct in recreational sporting contexts. So that is it. It's the conduct in a particular context, not the title given to any particular participant. What I tried to bring out in the brief is the role that coaches play in these sporting activities, and particularly the role that Coach Phil Meyer played in this particular activity. This is not an absence of supervision case. This is a claim that there was somehow negligent supervision at this moment. But this coach was on the field with her players. She was in among them when this event happened, and that happens all the time in scholastic sports. What you have are coaches who have to make a number of decisions that all come down to participation in the sporting context. This is an amateur sporting and voluntary sporting context. What I think, so, A, the standard should be the recklessness standard. This is a participant in a sporting activity. What the appellate division did was state that a coach categorically, by nature of a title, regardless of whether Coach Phil Meyer is in with the girls, whether she is giving them advice, whether she is on the field with them, it doesn't matter to the appellate division. What they said is her status as a coach and instructor means she's not entitled to a recklessness standard, and that it has to be judged by a different standard, which would be ordinary negligence. Now, what that means is that the entire purpose of Cron gets undone in this context, because what, imagine what we are going to have if every coach who tells a kid, "Don't forget, you know, get close to the plate," because a pitch that's an inside or an outside pitcher, you want to be close to the plate, and what happens? The chin music happens, and all of a sudden, somebody sues the coach, because they told this child to do what was appropriate in a sporting context.
What would be the standard, oh, I'm sorry. What would be the standard if this happened in gym class? Not in a...
It's an interesting question, because I think that has arisen in some of the unpublished decisions. A gym class is a bit different, and it would also depend upon the age of the kids, what the activity is. I mean, I don't think you can necessarily state what it would be, if you're talking about high school kids.
Let's go back to teachers generally. If there were a science class going on, and a teacher, there was a chemistry experiment that went wrong, that's negligence. That's under negligence.
Right.
Torque claims.
Yes.
Right. Gym class, similar thing, the kids have to be there, there's an injury. The fact that it's a sporting context wouldn't take that out of negligence, would it?
Well, I think it might. In fact, I think that there's, in some of the unpublished decisions, it is because of the nature of the sporting activity, and the involvement of the kids, and just generally the nature of it, that there is a, that would be an appropriate reckless standard. There are factors that, when you're involved in sporting activities, where there is necessarily going to be action, and there's going to be possible physical contact between kids, what I think the Supreme Court has said is, in the context of recreational sporting activities, recklessness is going to be the standard. I do think, I do think that there is a question that could be raised, depending upon the particular facts of the case, that are certainly not present here. And what we are talking about is this particular case, where we are in a varsity setting. After school, you do not have a captive audience, or a captive participation. These are kids who are interested in the sport. They want to be better in field hockey. This is how you get scholarships. This is how you make friends. There's a whole lot of reasons why kids decide that they want to pursue this. This is not a situation where we have in gym class, where it is mandatory nowadays, and I think even recess is now mandatory nowadays, so you have, the state encouraging activity and exercise. So I would say that I would still argue, depending on the particular facts and the age of the kids and what the activity is, that it still should be a reckless standard.
I'm going to come back, Mr. Beck, to the hypothetical about the batting practice. I've lived both sides of that one, by the way, as a coach, and then years ago in Little League, right? So, in batting practice, the coach/pitcher is simulating a game experience. You know, the soccer coach could also simulate, telling the defenders, "I'm going to now dribble in, you stop me." There's a number of situations where, during the coach's involvement with the children, there's simulation of game conditions, and I didn't read the appellate division opinion to preclude the application of the recklessness standard when the coach is doing things like that, but maybe I missed something, but it seems like you could distinguish those sorts of activities by a coach from, you know, choosing which field to play on or where to assemble. Maybe I'm misremembering it. I think that that would sound like analogous to the recklessness situation, no?
Well, I, the way I understood, the way I understood the appellate division decision, because of the factual context, is, I mean, this was a very active coach. She was out there with, and maybe I'm misunderstanding...
It wasn't simulating a game situation with the players, as opposed to your batting practice situation, which is, let's pretend I'm the pitcher, you're the batter, hit the ball. In that one, it sounds, it seems like the appellate division is acknowledging that there's room for the recklessness standard. It's where the coach is exercising judgment about, or making decisions about where the player should be, that's qualitatively different, no?
Well, it would be, but I don't think that's the way the appellate division reads. If they had given an appropriate latitude in the decision, instead of saying, "For these reasons, we need not consider applying a new standard to the conduct of instructors or coaches," period, that's what the appellate division says. And I think that anybody reading this published decision in the context where you have a coach who is active with her players, this is not somebody who is sitting on the sideline smoking a cigarette. This is somebody who is engaging with her athletes. And what the decision says is, "We need not consider applying a new standard to the conduct of instructors or coaches." Phil Meyer is a public employee, and that's where the appellate division said Title 59 ought to take care of this. Well, Title 59 incorporates the common law defenses that are available when situations, when the immunities afforded under Title 59 don't have a great fit. So, no, I do not believe that this, the appellate division opinion here is flexible enough that any coach or instructor who is involved with these kids will know that, okay, it's, when I'm simulating the pitch, I'm covered, but if I'm in with the kid, or if I'm letting a child, who normally is not on the field, if I say, you know what, "This kid has been sitting here for three months wanting to get in a game time practice, go on in." And then, what is that? I mean, that is a decision made by coaches all the time. I do not read the appellate division opinion as being flexible. It says, "Coaches and instructors are not entitled to or not covered by this because they're not co-participants."
So, Mr. Beck, let me ask you this question, because you used the words "physical contact", "active," "engaging," and "participant." Let's make believe, in the Cron case, instead of the defendant on second base, the coach, the coach himself, let's say, was on second base, and that coach was rounding third to score, to beat out the throw. In that situation, you would agree that the coach was acting as a participant, right?
Certainly.
And therefore, you would conclude that the heightened standard applies?
Absolutely.
But in this case, the coach was not acting as a participant, specifically a co-participant in this competitive recreational sport of field hockey. The coach herself did not injure the plaintiff.
Right.
In my hypothetical, the coach injured Cron, because the coach slid into home plate. In this case, there was no physical contact, there was no activity, there was no engagement between the coach and the plaintiff in terms of the injury. And isn't that really the context of one of the reasons for why Cron imposed such a heightened standard, specifically to promote rigorous participation in athletic activity? This was not the situation here, right? Like, for instance, the roller skater who ran into another roller skater, and that other participant got hurt, or the two players out in center field ran into one another. That's promoting rigorous activity in the sporting activity. How would applying the heightened standard to Phil Meyer promote the rigorous participation in the game of field hockey?
Because that's what a coach does. A coach controls how these players interact with each other. That is in some...
The interaction is what I'm focusing on.
Sure.
It's not interacting in terms of the advice the coach might give in general. It's the, it's the one player hurting another player in the sporting activity. The football players who bang into each other, and somebody dislocates a knee. If one football player intentionally and recklessly tried to take out that knee, that's one thing, but if they just sort of tackle the other guy, that's promoting rigorous participation in athletic activity. Here, there was no such similar participation in the game itself, or the sporting activity itself. So, I'm struggling with trying to understand how imposing the heightened standard under these facts would promote the rigorous activity of field hockey, especially when the plaintiff was injured by a soccer ball coming from a different game, on a different field, with a different coach supervising. So, help me understand more about how imposing the higher standard promotes rigorous activity if the participation has nothing to do with physical contact between two players, or two participants in the sporting activity itself.
Okay. Because what you have is a dynamic in team sports, where a coach is going to, I mean, what you have in this case is the kicker kicking the soccer ball, who then hits a kid on another field, all right? You could have the same situation with the coach, who takes the lesser player, who says, "Okay, it's time. You've been waiting all the time, go into the game," and then the issue happens where he gets slid into, or there is some of that physical contact. If the court is satisfied that there is not going to be tort liability at all for the decision to send these kids in, "We've got to get these kids involved in this sport." This is what they want to do.
Yeah, well, what if he sends them in, and a ball comes from the field next to it, because they were playing on five fields and a big, and the other ball hits him in the head and knocks him down? What's the standard there? It's not a mutual sports activity. That's not a Cron situation.
Who's being sued?
I'm assuming the coach.
All right. Well, I mean, because we, there's obviously going to be a Cron situation where there's a mishit ball that ends up striking another student, because you have that same thing in...
As opposed to the situation where he takes his player and sends him on the field. I'm not conceding that that is the situation we do or don't have here, but he's put him on the field, and picking up what Judge Faccielli said, and he doesn't get hurt in the game, but there's a game next to it, because every soccer field in New Jersey today is part of five different fields next to each other. Ball comes from the next field, and hits him in the head, knocks him down, and hurts him badly. What is the standard in that situation? Are they co-participants?
Is the coach a co-participant? I think that the standard and the theory behind Cron has to apply. Do I think that there's any negligence on a coach in this situation?
That's all I ask. I'm just asking the standard.
Standard should be recklessness, because otherwise you can't have a coach providing the type of introduction to the players that they need, because there are so many things that can go wrong in athletic competition, in having kids in close proximity, that if there isn't that protection...
Is this really about instructing students on how to play a sport, or is it in making sure they don't get struck by foreign objects coming from a different game?
Well, it depends on what you're saying, what is the "it." The "it," if you were talking about the public policy, it is that you create the structure and the comfort level in the sporting activity that nobody expects that they are going to be sued for negligence because of something not under their control.
But don't you think a coach in this situation should be under a duty to ensure, when there's like a whole bunch of things going on at the same time, that their players are not in the line of fire? You know, they're playing field hockey, and a soccer game broke out, you know, and does the teacher not, or does coach not have an obligation to make sure they're in the right places so they don't get struck by foreign objects?
Well, that's what you have the ball stopper netting for in this particular situation, and that's what we talked about. We have a context where the decision below regarding the unsafeness, the unsafety of the physical facility, isn't being appealed from. So you have this facility that is constructed, the Board of Education is immune from liability, it has been found to not constitute an unsafe condition of public property, and the coach utilizes that section of the field based upon that standard. There is a netting there that protects them, all right? So...
And isn't the netting constructed, one of the reasons was so that simultaneous sporting events can take place at the same time, similar to what Justice Solomon mentioned? In a lot of these sporting facilities, there's rarely one activity taking place at one time. It's often multiple.
Exactly.
So this ball stopper was erected for the purpose of allowing multiple simultaneous sporting activities to take place...
Exactly.
...in the hopes that the ball stopper would prevent, you know, balls from entering the different areas.
Well, that is, exactly. That is the safety device that's implemented to allow the simultaneous practices, to not have the kids spread out all over areas that are not really suited for game time practice. You bring them onto the facility, so yes, the ball stopper was there to promote exactly what was occurring on the day this incident occurred.
And one of the other policy considerations from Cron in imposing the recklessness standard was to hopefully prevent the flood of litigation, a flood of litigation. So, you know, is it your argument that if coaches for these types of sports, sporting events, sporting events in varsity high schools, high schools would not want to become coaches if they are under, if they understand that they might be liable for any and every possible thing that can occur in these situations where there are multiple sports taking place? There are numerous things that can go wrong on a sporting field, depending on where the coach might tell one player to stand versus where a coach might tell another player to stand at any given moment, during any given practice, or any given game, all the time.
Precisely. The idea is not to have coaches spend as much time prepping for depositions as they do prepping for game times or practices, or schedules, or evaluating which kids are better for which position. So that's exactly right, because this case is a classic case of this. I mean, this, what did Ms...
The mutual, I'm not sure that's consistent with Cron. What is the mutual sports activity here, between the injured student and the coach?
The participation in the activity itself. It's conduct...
What's the mutual, what is the mutual sports activity? What are they doing together? In other words, he's not coaching her in field hockey, per se. He's certainly not coaching her in soccer. What is the, what is he doing, or she doing?
She.
She, correct.
No, no, that...
What is she doing that is the mutual sports activity consistent with Cron?
It is the involvement in the sports activity. You have a team concept here. You have a coach and players.
Her presence at the practice is enough.
No, well, I would say that if that's what we were looking at, the presence, might it be enough? But the facts of this case are very specific. She is on the field with these kids. She has organized, she meaning the coach, has organized this corners practice to improve them, to get them involved in this recreational sporting activity. What happens, and one of the things I want to emphasize is that, when we get to what this case means, part of it is defending the proposition that the recklessness standard has to be applied to coaches for this scholastic activity to have any type of security, that can these coaches make decisions without ending up being sued every time? What we had in this particular case is the practice was over, you have the player, plaintiff Dennehy, coming over to the coach afterwards and saying, "Can I take a shot on goal for fun? This is the recreational activity. We are now not even in the practice anymore." This is literally a kid saying, "I'd like to be able to do this. Sure, go ahead." I don't even see the negligence on that, but nonetheless, if we are going to have a bright-line rule, it can't be what the appellate division here said.
So your focus is not on co-participant status? In Cron, you have a catcher and a baserunner, and one of the policy reasons underlying the heightened standard in Cron was to promote the vigorous participation in athletic activities. Does a coach, without being a participant in the actual events that are going on, promote vigorous activity?
Is the catalyst, the coach in a particular case is going to be the catalyst for the vigorous activity? That it's, I still view a coach as being a participant because people who are involved in recreational sports know the context in which the coach, what the coach controls and what the coach doesn't.
And how far would that logic extend? I know the athletic director is no longer in the case here...
Right.
But would that person logically be covered under the same heightened standard, according to the force of your argument?
The athletic director?
Yes.
I would not necessarily expect so. I don't know what the cause of action would be, though, because in this, in this case, we have a declaration by the lower court that was not appealed about the safety issues. So...
Not this case, but assume there was no dispute about the cause of action. What would the standard be for somebody who's a step remote, the athletic director?
Well, what has, what has that, what has the athletic director done that got him sued? Just the fact that he's a supervisor?
Aided decision with respect to the operation of sporting activities that...
No, well, then I think you get more to the Title 59 type of discretionary activity, because that is assuming that it's a... because that is, assuming that it's a scholastic, you know, Title 59 situation, then you might get to the more high-level activities or decisions.
Let's make it simpler. Play this kid. This kid is going to make our school look good.
Mm-hmm.
What standard would apply to a hypothetical suit against an athletic director?
Right. I'd probably have to know a little bit more about it, because I can envision a number of cases, a number of situations, like hazing and things like that, where even a coach should not have a reckless standard applied. It has to be the situation, the circumstances in which this athletic personnel is involved. I personally would not expect the athletic director to have a reckless standard, because that is too far removed from the actual participation, the give and take between this student athletes and somebody who's directing it. I mean, if we had a real, specific fact scenario, like the parents came to the athletic director and complained that my kid is not getting time.
That was my hypo.
So the, and a parent actually comes?
No, 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 whatever. We've gone far enough.
Okay.
Let me ask you one about the safety of the field conditions. And let's make it a private school, so we don't have to worry about the tort claim.
Title 59, okay.
So, you know.
And we're not going to worry about charitable immunity or anything like that?
Yeah, just a private associate, whatever, right? So it's a private enterprise, and they're supposed to have soccer practice a certain day, and it rained all day. The field is really wet and slippery, and the coach decides, well, it doesn't look that wet to me. I want the kids out there, get them accustomed to being out in a dangerous field because it's so slippery, and the kid gets hurt. Now, is that the kind of, you know, interaction that you're talking about that triggers the recklessness standard, the selection of a dangerous field to play on?
Well, I can tell you that if you remember the Harris case, which had to do with the slick, I think it was a track, the school district got sued over that exact, I think, theory, and the recklessness standard, I believe, was applied. Do I think it's appropriate? I actually suppose that it would be appropriate to apply a reckless standard, because there is still a fundamental ability to challenge just how reckless the conduct was, that if this is, anybody looking at this says, there's no way any reasonable adult is going to send these kids out onto this field under those conditions, do I think you can meet a reckless standard? Might be a little bit tough, but can you? Sure. And I actually think that that might be one that should not be decided on summary judgment. This one, summary judgment.
Other questions, any? Anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you, just two minutes to rebut please, and that'll be fine. Thank you, I appreciate it.
So I just remind counsel, I asked for, you did ask, never mind, and that was perfectly fine. Ms. Rock.
May it please the court, when we're looking at calibrating a standard of care, there's certain considerations that come into play, and it's always a matter of public policy, and also how these things play out in reality, and the ecosystem of risk that we're addressing when we're trying to calibrate the appropriate standard of care. Now, most of the time, ordinary negligence makes sense, but in certain situations, this court has held that the considerations around a sport or a certain type of riskier activity require a recalibrated heightened standard of care. In Cron, this court held that there's two policy objectives that are advanced by having a heightened recklessness standard. First, there's the vigorous participation in sports, and second, as Justice Pierre-Louis observed, it's to avoid a flood of litigation. Extent, excuse me, using Cron and applying Cron to coaches as participants advances both of these objectives. As far as the vigorous participation of sports, you need coaches to help kids practice, to focus them on skills that they need to develop. Now, I'm saying this not as a former high school athlete, quite the opposite, I was a mental athlete, as they said of us on the debate team, but the fact of the matter is a lot of those concepts are still the same. There's value in switching sides. I can tell you that much from my time on the debate team and on the mock trial team.
Did any object ever get thrown by the mock trial team? That can happen.
Not during mock trial team, but maybe during gym class, but that was for other reasons at the time. So getting to the vigorous participation in sports, I understand that Judges Sabatino and Faschali were interested in this sort of sliver of a situation where the coach says, okay, you know, take a hit on the goal. I believe in that situation, she was acting as a participant, and here's why. There's value in switching sides when you are practicing a sport. You're only as good as you are if you've seen it from the other perspective. You know, when I did debate, we would regularly switch sides, because when you hear the other side out loud and you're living it yourself, you hear the problems and fallacies with your own argument. Similarly, I imagine the more athletically inclined benefit from going out there, and even though she's a goalie, taking a hit on goal gives her a different perspective of what her, what she needs to be aware of when she's in there in the goal. We're dealing with somebody who is, certainly compared to myself, an elite athlete, somebody who eventually would go on to play D1 sports as opposed to high school mock, college mock trial. So that's how we advance the first objective, vigorous participation in sports. The second aspect is accidents and injuries happen in sports. I can tell you that from my own gym class experiences. These are something we all understand based in reality, and based on that ecosystem of risk, there should be a recalibrated standard of care when people are participating, perhaps instead of saying recreational sports, it may be better to say non-professional sports. So that would encompass Justice Patterson, the gym class scenario that you raised, that Cron would apply in the situation of gym class, because it's not the time of day that matters, rather it is the sort of geometry of risk at play. You're not going to get hit in the head when you're in social studies class, or at least I hope not, but even in gym class, even if you're.
Get injured in a class, you can get injured in a science class, you can be out on an environmental studies trip and get injured. Correct me if I'm wrong, that would all be under negligence.
That would be under frugus, I agree with you, Justice Patterson.
So what happens then is in a gym class, there's physical activity. Is that all, is that how low the bar is to go to a recklessness standard? There simply has to be a sports activity going on, or does there have to be something more?
Well, I think we can look to the two touchstones from the Cron decision, the vigorous participation in sports. So if you have maybe two kids in a classroom who are roughhousing and the teacher does nothing to intervene, that physical activity doesn't make it suddenly rise to Cron, because it looks like they're wrestling, you're still in a frugus situation.
They're interacting in the same sport. The two students in that situation are interacting in the same sport. We've got a peculiar situation here. We've got two different sports at issue. They're not supposed to be in touch with each other there. It's not like two, it's really analogous to me to, there's a soccer practice going on in a park, and there's a bicycle race, and all of a sudden somebody is injured there. There is no common activity by any of the players here, the person who caused the injury allegedly, and the person who was injured, and the only interaction here is between the coach and the players.
A more helpful framing might be that it really is about the coach, since the soccer player isn't involved in this case, but even then I would say Cron would apply to the soccer player, because all of the kids are playing on a field designed for simultaneous practice. They're all engaged in the vigorous participation of sports, and all of the coaches are hoping to not get sued because of their relationship and their presence there with the students.
So all that's necessary is that the plaintiff be involved in a physical sports activity?
I think that's where you start to have, you start to raise the issue from, I believe it's Mazin versus Newark Bears, but that's a completely, that would be a different situation. I think as long as the, I do think if the plaintiff is involved and the coach in their role is a co-participant, that's our perspective here, that they are a co-participant, they're there to help the athletes develop their skills, and even if something seems like a junky little throwaway hit on the goal, that's still part and parcel of her role as an active supervisor.
She's directing.
She's directing.
They're not colliding skiers, they're not colliding football players. She's in a directing, if a cross-country coach at a high school said, here's the route, you know, go run it as fast as you can and I'll time you, and then somebody's hit by a car, is that, is that coach engaged in a sports activity that invokes the recklessness standard?
I think vis-à-vis the coach's decision to let them run on some sort of dangerous path, there is room within the recklessness standard for that judge to still be found liable, and I think recklessness would apply to the coach in that situation. There's still plenty of room for a potential plaintiff to say.
Because the coach is standing in the field with a stopwatch, nothing more vigorous than that. Because the plaintiff is out there doing something athletic, a sports activity, that's all that's needed to?
No, it's not, it's not just that. It's, without coaches, you can't really have the vigorous participation in sports by youth. Otherwise, it's just a game of, you know, just unsupervised stickball or something like that. It's, you know, the, kids aren't very good at leading themselves. Coaches are so much a part of their development and their athletic development, and even their sportsmanship development, that they are participants, co-participants in their own way. They're just a different shade of co-participant.
What is your definition? Just so I can be clear, is it clear to me that a coach that's coaching baseball and a person that's injured playing baseball under that coach, it applies, the coach is a co-participant?
Yes.
What generally is your definition of co-participant? What's required? Because Cron doesn't seem to say that. Well, Cron seems to say that they have to be literally participating in athletic activity. The athletic, they have to be playing baseball, they have to be playing soccer, they have to be playing field hockey. What is your, and I think that's kind of what Cron says, I think that's what Judge Faschali was talking about. What is the definition?
I, I'm coming up with this on the fly, but I think the definition would involve at least some sort of interaction with the actual game. So it would be different from Mazin versus Newark Bears, where you just have a spectator going out to the mezzanine for a beer. Here, you do have a coach that is interacting with the players, has the authority to interact with the players. You know, this isn't some parent telling.
You agree this is not Cron?
Excuse me?
You agree this is not Cron? Cron said co-participant meant literally participating in the game.
Well, I believe, I believe they might have said co-participant, but then you have this sort of expanded definition, this expanded, more difficult-to-attain definition of co-participant in Rosania, and I think that's where some of the confusion was.
That was a totally different case.
It was.
That was a bean-by-tea karate instructor at a dojo, totally different than this case.
Yes.
Right? I think what Justice Solomon is saying, and also following up on the questions that Justice Patterson was asking, is there has to be something perhaps more than, as you just said, some sort of interaction with sporting activity. Since 1994, no court has ever said that that's all that was needed. It was always one participant in the sporting activity injuring another participant in the same sporting activity, and if that occurs, the heightened standard applies to allow them to engage in this rigorous activity on the field. So that's why I was asking Mr. Beck more about how does imposing this heightened standard promote this rigorous activity in the game itself?
I understand, I believe I understand. Well, I'll answer, and you'll let me know if I misunderstood. The coach is making decisions that impact their ability to play the sport safely, play the sport properly, to develop the particular skills of the sport, and I think if you take coaches out of the equation altogether, and you just have a high school team that's a bunch of kids, you know, led by another kid, you're not going to see the same development, you're not going to see vigorous participation in sports, because there's no one there to be a sounding board, a source of feedback.
Is there any case in which a non-participant, whether it's a coach, whoever it is, was held liable? Even in Rosania, this instructor kicked or hit the kid right in the eye, so he was engaged in karate with his student. Is there any case at all, would this be the first one, where the individual causing the injury, not even the individual, the individual sued and liable under a negligence or under a heightened standard, or a heightened standard, boy, I said this, a heightened standard is applied where the person sued is not the one causing or involved in the injurious, injurious conduct?
I think Justice Solomon, the Mazhar case, might be the most helpful to what we're both trying to get at. That's the case where I believe it was a third base coach who wasn't playing, but was telling the child, you know, a slide, slide, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, it might have been the third baseman or the catcher, somebody, another kid got injured as a result of the coach telling the runner to slide. And in that, it's an unpublished case out of the appellate division, and the appellate division held that Cron applied to the coach in that situation, because the coach, even though he wasn't playing as a co-participant, his interaction in guiding the student slide, you know, there's a reason we have baseline coaches. You kind of need somebody objective who's got a bird's eye view to encourage you to have the chutzpah to go down.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I just, you've been stressing the, effectively, the importance of the coach in leading the kids, supervising them, inspiring them, all that, right? So given the importance of that, as a matter of public policy, why should our law immunize negligent coaching with respect to things that are not co-participant matters? Why should we adopt a standard that would tolerate negligent coaching when, as you said, that role's really important?
The role is very important, and I think based on that single consideration, the importance of having a grown-up in the room, that's where you get frugus. But frugus takes place not on sort of the battlefield of sports, but rather in a classroom where there were so many opportunities for other grown-ups to say, for lack of a better phrase, timeout, this principal's being really creepy to this child. You sort of have this cooler heads prevail situation when you have the luxury of being in a classroom, but when you're in the middle of sports practice, it's a little more chaotic, and we all recognize that about sports. Hence why I hid away on the debate team. There are certain situations that we know carry more risk, that are a little more chaotic, and that is the special extra factor that takes us away from frugus and into Cron for the, for the high school coach.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Rock.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Honors. Let me start by saying here, as properly noted by the appellate division, plaintiff's claim is based on Coach Philmyers' failure to properly supervise and oversee the participants of the sport she was tasked to instruct. Participation is something far different from instructing, from supervising, from coaching. This is not a traditional Cron case. This is a negligent supervision case, as properly noted by the appellate division. And through the course of the litigation and obviously preparing for the appellate division in this argument today, I've had the occasion to read Cron versus Campo several times, and really gain an understanding of what Justice Handler was talking about when he decided to set the duty of care between equally situated co-participants to this duty to refrain from engaging in injurious conduct that's the product of recklessness or intentional behavior, all right? And he starts by looking at the relationship between sports participants, and he notes that it's derived from a consensual relationship that involves both articulated and unarticulated rules, obvious and obscure conventions, and clear and not-so-clear expectations. Now, when players step on the field in many sport scenarios, there's an expectation that physical contact may occur. Even in sports that are traditionally characterized as non-contact sports, such as golf, as this court noted in Schick versus Farolito, there is a certain level of risk that's being assumed by the participant. But the degree of what physical contact is being consented to in this consensual relationship among participants, and the nature of the risks that are being assumed by the participants varies. It's highly subjective. What my understanding of hard play, maybe someone on the other side of the field be considering a flagrant foul. So Justice Handler recognized that this is a highly subjective relationship in terms of what's being consented to when stepping onto the field. So in the context of this consensual relationship, he said, we're going to set the standard at recklessness or intentional conduct. That's what, that's what participants have the duty to avoid in terms of causing injury, because clearly, when stepping on the. Because clearly, when stepping on the field, no one's consenting to that type of excessively harmful conduct. But this consensual arrangement between equally situated co-participants was never intended to apply to coaches or anyone tangentially involved in the recreational sports context. Okay? There's no published opinion that applies the Cron standard to, to a coach. Every case that applies Cron following the 1994 decision applies it in the context of the plaintiff getting hurt by another participant either who collided into the plaintiff or somehow otherwise caused the plaintiff to suffer some sort of injury. You have Schick versus Farolito where the, the, the member of the foursome takes an unannounced second tee shot, a mulligan if you will, and strikes the plaintiff in the eye when the defendant admittedly realized that the plaintiff was in the line of fire. You have Anglin versus Mountain Creek Resort in which a snowboarder causes a skier to fall and ultimately strike his head in the concrete barrier and die. That, that applies the, the Cron heightened analysis to the, the conduct of the snowboarder. You have Ober versus Barata in which the plaintiff and the defendant collide when they're both going for a fly ball during an informal intra-office softball bet, which I'll note, there is no coach involved in that. Okay? You have Justice Handler's, I'm sorry, Justice, Judge Sabatino's decision in CJR versus GA in which the conduct of an 11-year-old lacrosse player who strikes the forearm of a player on the opposing team is evaluated under the Cron heightened standard. I, I recognize that there's a little twist to that case because Judge Sabatino gives us this two-layered analysis in terms of analyzing the conduct as if it was committed by an adult under Cron's heightened reckless standard, but then looking at whether or not someone at 11 years old is, is still held liable, given their age, intellect, and intelligence, I'm sorry, age, intelligence, and experience.
We weren't dealing there with whether the coach would be liable.
Right.
Opposing player or the end parents.
Opposing player. And that's really what I'm trying to drive home is, there's no decision that, that applies Cron outside the context of, of participants engaged in the actual activity itself. All right? So this is not a Cron case. This is a negligent supervision case in which Morgan Dennehy was brought out to the D-zone instructed by Dez Philmeyer to, to begin practice during a time slot which was prohibited pursuant to a calendar created by the athletic director, Coach Phil Meyer's boss, which was completely violated.
So putting aside whatever the degree of negligence you have to show, what exactly is the act or omission Phil Meyer committed that you're complaining of?
It's, it's, it's instructing the field hockey team, including Morgan Dennehy, to be in the D-zone and begin practicing on the turf field facility prior to when they were scheduled to do so. Their practice was not to commence until 3:45. In the meantime, from 2:30 to 3:45, the boys' soccer team had priority or had, had, were permitted to use the turf field facility. So by bringing her to the turf field in violation of the calendar, it exposed her to, to the soccer ball, increased the risks that would otherwise be associated with Morgan playing field hockey. I said this when I appear before the appellate division, but when Morgan Dennehy signed up to play field hockey at the Hightstown High School, she did not sign up to get struck in the head by a soccer ball from an ongoing boys' soccer practice.
What about Rosania? You, you said there was nothing involving an instructor. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Rosania versus Carmona was the case in which the.
Karate instructor.
The karate instructor didn't convey to the, the plaintiff that there was, well, let me step back. Pursuant to the plaintiff, there was dojo rules that prohibited strikes, I believe, above the head.
Right. And it was in the eye.
Right. When the plaintiff was going for the black belt proficiency exam, the instructor struck the plaintiff in the eye in violation of the dojo rules. So Rosania.
You have, you have an instructor-student relationship.
Right. But the, but in that case, the instructor's actively engaged in the recreational sport context, in this, in that case karate. Okay? Coach Phil Meyer is not actively participating in field hockey practice regardless of how loose you want to, you want to, I guess, define coaching.
She didn't kick the soccer ball, but, but if coaches, field hockey or otherwise, are running back and forth, they're, they're, you know, physically active during a practice, where does the line drawn?
Well, I think normal expectations for minor players and adult coaches is that the adult coach is not going to enhance the risks that are otherwise associated or inherent in the sporting activity itself.
But we're, we're not talking about enhancement of a risk, we're talking about what, what standard of care applies. And, and so the enhancement of the risk is something to be debated within, pursuant to whatever standard of care applies.
Right.
But, but coaches, the batting practice example was used, there are a lot of situations where coaches are, are kicking a soccer ball around with their players or, or taking a shot on goal to give the goalie some practice and so forth. It's, it's, to say, coaches, at least in my limited experience, are not generally standing stationary and, and just bossing people around, they're involved.
Right. So I think the, the main distinction between a coach in that context who's providing instruction and as, as balance characterize in and about the, the players on the field is the level of emotional intensity that's present. There, there really is none in, in the context of instructing the players versus two equally situated participants where the objective is to win the game.
So we, so the, the standard of care relies on the level of emotional intensity?
No.
If you had, the instructor, in the karate case, Rosania is an expert presumably, knows the rules, and is, is engaged in essentially a test of the student's skills to see if the student qualifies for, for the, whatever the belt was. Okay? So the instructor is, 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 is acting as a coach as he is engaged in the karate? Why is that so different from this case?
Well, you're dealing with two adults, and you're dealing with the instructor defendant who's engaged, causing physical contact to the, the plaintiff in that case in violation of the dojo rules.
I don't see the adult thing factoring in here. You've got the ski, the ski accident involved a child, if I remember correctly. The baseball, the baseball case, Judge Sabatino decided involved a child. So yeah, there are probably a lot of different relationships that could, could happen here, but where's the, where's the, where's the line that can be drawn that distinguishes the Cron situation from the coaching situation?
I, I think it comes back to exposing the participant to physical contact. All right? And you don't, you don't have that with instruction.
So take my hypothetical with your adversary. Instead of the defendant in Cron being the player, let's say the coach wanted to get in the game, and the coach was on second base and takes out the catcher plaintiff.
In, in that situation, I think you have to look at, were the risks otherwise inherent in the sporting activity itself, in this case softball, increased by the coach? Now, that would be up for debate in terms of whether or not the, the coach was, you know, advised by the players, I guess in your hypothetical, to, you know, not slide or, or to not, not, not participate over zealously in, in the game.
No, my question goes to what Justice Patterson was questioning you about. Where do you draw the line? Is it really a title that we should be caring about, coach, instructor? Or is it, what does participant mean? And if you have a coach or an instructor participating in the sport itself and trying to promote the rigorous participation in the activity and injures the other participant, then wouldn't the heightened standard apply in that circumstance?
If, if the coach themselves is actually participating, exposing the players to, to physical contact, I, I would tend to agree with that.
And I know, I know we talked a little bit about how the instructor in the karate case was different because the court applied the standard pertaining to an invitee, a business invitee. But as Justice Patterson pointed out, that instructor was sparring with the injured party. And, you know, whether they, whether that instructor broke a rule in the dojo or not was engaged in the rigorous participation of sparring. So hypothetically, would the Cron heightened standard apply to that circumstance as well?
To the instructor in, in Rosania?
Yeah.
Yeah, who's, who's exposing the, the plaintiff to direct physical contact? Yes, I would say so.
But that's the outcome, the contact. I, I think what the judge is trying to get to is, is it the fact that this person, he may be a coach, he may be a player, is participating? He's kicking the ball, he's hitting the ball, he's tagging the player, he's swinging the stick. That, that is what separates the standards. It's not the identity, it's the activity, the actual participating in the karate, sparring, in the running the bases, that's what separates the standard. Is it the participation or is it standing in the dugout saying, you know, go team or whatever it is?
It's.
Take that field instead of that field.
Justice Solomon, I would say it is the participation itself. I would, I would say that, not necessarily the title. But I, I, you know, when, when a, an adult coach is, I guess, simulating a game situation with minor players, I think the expectation is that the.
That's different. Now, you're, was he negligent, wasn't he negligent?
Right.
Was he reckless, wasn't he reckless, depending what standard of care? But that's not what defines the standard. The standard is what's he doing?
Right. And I would, I would agree that it is, it is the, the act of participation in, in the sports context.
Take a case where at the end of practice, the coach says, do some wind sprints, student collapses, and a lawsuit is filed. What's the appropriate standard there?
Well, I don't, I don't think, in, in that hypothetical, that the coach is, is participating in, in the, the wind sprints exercise, so I don't, I don't think Cron would apply. But, but, but then, you know, this concern about opening the floodgates to litigation is, you'd have to ask yourself, you know, negligence doesn't equate to automatic liability, and it pains me as a plaintiff's attorney to say that, but you still have to establish there's a breach in the duty of care. And in your hypothetical, Chief Justice Rabner, I, I don't know if, if there would be one short of there being an indication that the, the, you know, the, the player was suffering from some sort of cardiac issue prior to being instructed to do wind sprints. But, but I, with, without a coach actively participating in the sports contact, context, exposing a player to the physical contact that was inherent in, in sporting activities as, as discussed by Justice Handler and Cron, I, I, I would not say Cron would apply in that, in that hypothetical.
I want to ask you by comparison on the public policy aspects of this. The defense have asserted that if we affirm the appellate division opinion, we're going to discourage people from wanting to serve as coaches. And, and as you know, in Title IIa for volunteer coaches, ordinary negligence is immunized, right? Why shouldn't we, as a sensible common law rule, similarly have immunity for ordinary negligence for coaches who work for public educational institutions? Because if we don't, as the appellate's argued, you know, the, the coaches are going to be spending more time in depositions than they will be out in the field. And they'll be, they don't get, I think, paid an enormous amount of extra money to do this. Do we worry at all about discouraging people from undertaking these roles as coaches at schools?
Well, Judge Sabatino, first, Cron's never applied to coaches, so nothing's changing. With regards to the legislature, legislation that, that Your Honor referred to.
That's a Cron standard, that's a recklessness standard. You have to, ordinary negligence is, is not actionable, right?
Right. Right. That's correct. But subsection F specifically says that it, it precludes coaches involved in private or, or.
Right. So it doesn't literally apply, but by, you know, comparison, should we have a similar rule for high school coaches and, and such because of the public policy aspects of it that I've just mentioned?
No, because as the appellate division noted, especially in the public employee context, they already have the defenses and immunities that are afforded under Title 59, including discretionary activity immunity under 59 colon 3-2. So, so I, I do not, I mean, the legislature's already addressed this too, like I said, in subsection F of, of the legislation that Your Honor.
So if the athletic director approaches the science teacher, say, would you like to coach after school? We'll give you a little extra money. Oh, no, no, I don't want to get sued. You know, is that a possible conversation that we're encouraging?
I mean, if, it, it doesn't outweigh the well-established duty of school personnel to provide reasonable supervisory care to students entrusted to them. Okay? So, so any chilling effect that would have on coaches, which I submit it wouldn't because nothing's really changing, it's status quo, does not outweigh that, that policy consideration.
You, you told us, I think, that your case is about the timing of the beginning of activities. Is that all, that's what, because your allegations are more general, but what, the bottom line here is that it was, it was whether or not you consider at the beginning of the practice allowing the students to start shooting, taking shots on goal before 3:45. That's the case.
To be in that area.
To be in the area.
In violation of a calendar that was created by the athletic director.
But wasn't the, just, correct me if I'm wrong, the calendar allowed the boys' soccer team to be on the turf field at a certain time. And at 3:45, the, the girls' field hockey team were also, would then be allowed to be on the turf field. They, prior to 3:45, the field hockey team was on, in the D-zone. That's not the same as the turf field. The D, isn't the D-zone the area between the turf field and other fields where the ball stopper netting was installed to prevent ball interference?
That, that's correct, but, but the calendar related to usage of the turf field facility as a whole unit, not simply the playing field.
Are you saying there was some sort of implicit rule that most students should be out there prior to the moment practice began?
Correct.
They shouldn't be in the vicinity?
They should not be on, in, they should not cross the fenced-in area to, to access the turf field facility.
Was that, is that, was that a rule?
That, that was pursuant to the calendar created by the athletic director.
Well, the athletic, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right. The calendar designated a certain time slot for use of the turf field. So I mean, what, my discussion with defense counsel earlier, the ball stopper netting was installed, it seems, to allow for simultaneous athletic sports activity to take place at varying times. But it sounds like you're saying at all times, there was only, only one sporting activity was allowed in this entire facility, even though it seems as though the purpose behind the construction of this facility was to allow for multiple sporting activities to take place at, at the same time.
Not at the same time, but to use the facility to, to, to play various types of, of activities, but not all at the same time.
So what was the purpose of the ball stop, ball, the netting?
Pursuant to the manufacturer, the, the ball stopper netting is just that. It's to stop the ball so that the, the pace of the game is not affected by the ball going out of bounds and someone have to chase after it and then, you know, in, in the soccer context, you know, throw it in.
Is that why the school district installed the, the ball net stopper?
For, yeah, I mean, for, for, for that purpose, I'm not exactly sure, Your Honor.
But are we, that, that, all that stuff about the ball net and the, that's the negligence issue of what is your theory of negligence and what's the jury got to find to find? Does that have anything to do with what we're talking about here, the standard of care for the co-participant coach? Does, does, whether or not that's negligence and how to apply that standard, does that have anything to do with the question that's in front of us?
No, not at all.
It goes more to the weight of the evidence as to the negligence.
For, for, for a jury to.
Supervise.
Correct. For a jury to find whether there was an actual breach.
But, but it's important, I, I think, because you, you're, you've identified your cause of action. Okay? And, and in all of these cases, when there's a, a standard of care is being talked about, what is happening at the moment when this happens? Right? What is the, what are the, the skiers or the snowboarder and the skiers are both engaging in recreational activity, they collide. Baseball collision, they're playing. The moment that this happened, what you are saying is that the, the field hockey team was in a place authorized or directed by the coach before the beginning of practice that put them in a dangerous situation.
That's correct.
And it has nothing to do, so, so what we've read about a goalie taking a shot on goal, normally not her position, that's, that's a fact, but it's not the essence of this. This is about where they were. This is about where they were at a given moment, and you're saying that that is, that was against, contrary to the schedule. So that's, so the role of the coach at that moment is overseeing the students and directing them to be in a particular place.
That's correct.
Had practice begun?
No. Oh, well, the girls' field hockey practice had not started.
I understand that time was supposed to be 3:45. Was this a practice going on when this injury occurred?
This was a, according to Coach Phil Meyer, this was instruction to set up in an area to engage in a corners drill to maximize the turf surface because they had a game on the turf field the following night, and the ball travels different on grass than it does on the turf.
So is it, was it part of the practice even if it started early?
Not the formal scheduled practice. This was more of a drill that Coach Phil Meyer requested the players participate in.
Any other questions? Anything you'd like to add?
Sorry, I just wanted to just look at my notes here. Sure, the minute I sit down to my seat, I'm going to remember that I did want to add something, but I believe I covered anything, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
May I please the Court, the New Jersey Association for Justice thanks the Court for allowing us to participate as amicus. We represent injured people in New Jersey and advocate on behalf of public safety. And we support Mr. Hayes, his position in this case, and we agree, we argue the appellate division correctly decided not to expand immunity in Cron and correctly decided that it does not apply in this case. As some of Your Honor's questions, I think, have pointed to, by the plain text of Cron, one clear quote is, "The critical issue in this action turns on the nature of a player's duty to avoid inflicting physical injury on another player." That's straight from Cron. And that's the context in which Cron was decided. Justice Patterson asked a hypothetical about if, whether the game happened in gym class, and there was some discussion of the general duty of reasonable care that applies to all employees of a school. And in addition to the cases of Fugus and Titus versus Lindberg, in some of the unpublished decisions that have been cited to the Court, a published decision is cited called Sutphen versus Benfion, 165 New Jersey Super 79. And that case, in fact, involved, I'm sorry, that's the appellate division from 1979. That case, in fact, involved hockey game, floor hockey, in gym class. And in that case, the allegations include, against the teacher, included that they had the kids play in an unsafe place, too crowded, not a good place for the game. And the appellate division held, that presents a jury issue because, as teachers, they have a duty of reasonable care. And that's the background standard that we respectfully submit applies to the coach in this case and to coaches who work for schools in general. So we disagree with the defendants that the appellate division somehow divested coaches of some immunity that they've endured since 1994. And we agree with the plaintiff, there never was such an immunity for coaches under Cron or in any published case of this Court. Now, I think--
Is that true for other jurisdictions as well?
Oh, I'm sorry, Your Honor.
Is that true for other jurisdictions as well?
I wish I could tell, Your Honor, I had researched that subject, but I have not. In addition to the case law landscape of New Jersey, there was some reference by Judge Sabatino to the 2A statute immunizing volunteer coaches. And the motive behind that, as set forth in legislative history, was to encourage people to volunteer, to work for organizations such as Little League. Presumably, you wouldn't be assured there'd be insurance for you if you were just a volunteer coach. And similar to Cron, that case involved a pickup softball game. The players of an informal pickup game, they might not necessarily have insurance coverage, and they're just players vis-à-vis each other. Here, those rationales simply don't apply when we have a paid coach who is a public school employee already subject to a duty by virtue of that statute to reasonably supervise students and presumably as an employee of the school, should be indemnified by the school and provided with a defense. So those rationales that, you know, were behind the extraordinary steps of granting immunity to volunteer coaches simply aren't present in the context of this case. I think the fact that this case did not involve the coach playing the sport, physically participating in the sport, that enough takes this outside of the realm of Cron and could be enough to decide this particular case. Justice Patterson and some of the other, some other of Your Honor did raise a question about drawing the line then. Is it just the activity? Is it the status of the defendant? And in reviewing the case law, it may be that both come into play. I think it's clear that the Cron immunity itself is limited to players playing the game, engaged in the inherent conduct of the sport. In the Rosania, I hope I'm saying this right, I think I'm not, in the karate case, Rosania, in that case, the appellate division took into account not only that the instructor was participating in the actual physical sport of karate, but that this was also a case where the defendant wasn't just a participant, but a business owner. And by virtue of that status, had a duty that's set forth in our common law and has nothing to do with sports, but as a business owner, there's a duty there too. And in this case as well, the defendant is a coach and by virtue of that status, working for a school. And by virtue of that status, whether this is gym class or any activity sanctioned by the school, be it a field trip or practice, that status does impose a duty on the coach to reasonably care for the safety of the students in her charge. So both of those factors, I respectfully submit, do matter. But for the purpose of this case where the trial court erred was when it imported the Cron immunity and laid that over the coach. It doesn't apply here. And the appellate division respectfully, sorry, correctly noted that Cron simply doesn't apply to this case, and there's plenty of common law and some statutory law from the Torque Claims Act that involves the duties of this coach who was a school employee. So we respectfully submit that this was correctly decided by the appellate division, and Judge Mitterhoff's decision should be affirmed.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Beck, the battle?
Yes, please. Very quickly, since I really do only have two minutes, the Court's inquiry about the cause of action, if it's about the use of the D-zone, which seems to now be suggested is the cause of action, this court is not going to find in the record that there is a prohibition about using the D-zone for practices. The schedule was for the use of the turf field, which is typically known as the football field. You have the netting to separate the other areas, like the track. So imagine, I think what the plaintiff is suggesting is that there was some prohibition, despite spending $1.8 million on this improvement, to allow simultaneous use of this facility, that there is a rule somewhere, not in this record, that the, despite the $1.8 million, that there wasn't supposed to be any other activity within the athletic field. That is not in this record. That's the entire purpose of the ball stopper netting, and that's cited, that's even cited in the appellate division. Now, turning to the purpose of Cron and whether it applies or should be extended to coaches. The coaches serve a particular type of role in this, in sports, in interaction. They are participants, but it's in a different setting that still serves and is necessary to have a recklessness standard if there's going to be a vigorous pursuit of these athletic fields. One of the things I mentioned in my brief is that we look at the coaches, that they're involved in this team dynamic, they are not going to be suited up and hitting, pitching towards the plate because that isn't the purpose. But there are dozens of situations where the coach's role is going to determine how and whether they are going to allow these kids to participate in games. I said, every day is to when, who plays in what position? Now, is the coach out there deciding that Johnny is going to play second base instead of, instead of shortstop? No, but that's the role the coaches have. There's a certain role in participation in this sporting activity that is a coach's fundamental role, but it does not mean that they're not participating. That does not mean that the purposes for Cron aren't served by saying these coaches, if they're going to be effective, if they're going to allow these kids to do things, that to allow the kid who has been riding the bench for three weeks to finally get out there and play, they have to have these protections or they are not going to be able to do what coaches do in youth circumstances. What I mentioned is you have to remember that this is not professional ball. This is where kids want to play. And is a coach going to allow this person to play if he knows that by God, if he says, "Johnny, go ahead, slide in, you know, this is the time because we're up eight to nothing," and the ball takes a bad hop and hits this kid in the head, that brings him not to an award ceremony, but to a deposition.
Mr. Beck, do you know whether other jurisdictions apply the Cron standard, the heightened standard for a coach giving guidance of the sort that you just suggested?
I could, I thought that there was a reference to Illinois, you know, I honestly don't remember, but I know that in some of these, I just wish I could remember, I have the notebook full of cases here, but I believe that there was reference to other jurisdictions that apply the reckless standard to the instructor-pupil setting, and I just have to figure out which one it is, but I know that it's in, might have even been in Schick. You know, it was probably in Rosania though, because that's going to be the most likely source.
I was thinking of other jurisdictions, and you've mentioned Illinois outside of that.
I am actually not aware one way or the other.
Were you saying Rosania cites out-of-state cases?
I am not certain. I'm trying to think of, let's--
We'll find it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all counsel. We'll take the matter under advisement. Does anyone need a break before the disciplinary? Beck, is it a matter of Milan Patel?